To call to order the May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. Ms. Donovan, would you please call for her?
Mr. Cavalero is willing to be calling.
Thank you.
Mr. Ella.
Here.
Ms. McBride.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Cothard.
Here.
Mr. Henson.
Here. Thank you. And first thing on the agenda is, do we want to approve the agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, there are no changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Mr., is it Caballero?
Cavalero.
Cavalero, sorry. Got it now.
Mr. Ella.
Yes.
Ms. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Cothard.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Yes, thank you. Second item, it looks like we do have quorum to approve last month's minutes. Do we have any changes or anything that we need to address as they are presented? Or do we, we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Caballero? Cavalero? I'll get it through time.
Mr. Ella.
Yes.
Ms. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Cothard.
Yes.
Mr. Henson.
Epstein. Thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for a major modification to Case One, Two Thousand Twenty-Two Anderson, which is at nineteen forty-nine Wolfangle Road. Are you presenting tonight, Ms. Donovan? Thank you.
Thank you. So our first case tonight is Case One, Two Thousand Twenty-Two PUD Major. Sorry, that's not correct. It's Case One, Two Thousand Twenty-Two Anderson, Major Modification. And it is for Richard A. Palo, a squire for Aaronoff, Rosen and Hunt on behalf of Beaver Creek Interest. And this is for the property at nineteen forty-nine Wolfangle Road. So the request tonight is a major modification to the final development plan in Case One, Two Thousand Twenty-Two Anderson. And the applicant is requesting the following. A, a removal of the sidewalk along the detention basin. B, reduction of the front yard setback on Lot Three from thirty feet to twenty-seven feet. And request C, an increase in the depths of the lots, twenty-six through thirty by twenty feet, and a reduction of open space area from nine point five acres to nine point zero seven acres. So just a little bit of history included in your staff report and on the slide. This was first heard by Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for their zone change back in February tenth of two thousand twenty-two. And since then, has been approved by the Board of Trustees for a zone change from OO, Planned Office District, to C, CUP. This was approved in March, on March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. The zoning commission heard their final development plan on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and approved it with ten conditions. The Board of Trustees held a substantial modification for Case One, Two Thousand Twenty-Two on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And this was for the modification of Condition Number Three and Number Eight, in the addition of Condition Number Ten. This was regarding the trees, and those conditions are included in your staff report as well. And then the applicant submitted a major modification, which was intended to be heard at the last meeting we held in March, but requested a continuation prior to the meeting. So the, on the screen, you can see an overview of the entire property. This map is from Kages. This is the aerial map showing the existing property and tree coverage. So this was the site plan submitted by the applicant, and I, this one shows the changes highlighted in a gray color on, and it was provided in your packet as well. And then this one is a zoomed-in photo, or site plan of the site in general. This was the submitted landscaping plan, and again, those gray lots, building windows, are the lots that are affected by the submittal. And then this was submitted by the applicant, which is showing the changes in the tree cover. This is a drone photo that staff took to show the tree cover. This is looking from the front of the site towards Five Mile, and the left is Mercy Hospital. Again, this is of the site with Mercy in the background showing the tree coverage. Again, you can kind of see a portion of Mercy's parking lot in the upper right-hand corner. This is a drone photo looking at the existing barn and house towards Wolfangle. And this is standing at that barn, looking towards the back of the site. Tree coverage along the site that's facing towards Mercy. And again, these are just towards the back of the site. So our findings from any major modification to, any modification to the approved final development plan must be reheard by the zoning commission, and that's why it's in front of you tonight. The conditions from the trustee resolution, which is the zone change, as well as the final development plan in which you all approved, are in your staff report, so that you can see those listed out. And then these are the findings for the individual requests. So Request A for the removal of the sidewalk along the detention basin. The applicant stated that this was to reduce safety risk of pedestrians along the detention basin. And they explained in their letter that landscaping will go in place where the current sidewalk was proposed. However, Anderson Township Trails and Walkways Plan, and as well as Hamilton County Subdivision Regulations, require the installation of sidewalks on existing streets and both sides of the streets on all new streets within the township. The pedestrian plan is also part of the larger Township Trails Plan for the pedestrian connection along Wolfangle. We actually just received trustee approval last week to move forward with the second half of engineering and design for the sidewalk along Wolfangle Road. And that's on the Cross Creek side, so it would go from Cross Creek to Clough, and then would cross Clough and go up Wolfangle to Dellis Cove and connect them in. So having that sidewalk connection at Wolfangle Road, rather than pushed back away from the detention basin, would really affect that connection. Staff is also of the opinion that variance request is, sorry. Staff is not of the opinion that variance request A is in accordance with the approving final development plan because of that mid-block crossing. The safety feature of moving the mid-block crossing back actually reduces the ability to safely cross at Wolfangle. So we believe that the, that there's not a safety risk, and feel that the sidewalk should continue along the basin to Wolfangle Road, and then along the basin to connect to that mulch path. So Request B is the reduction of the front yard setback on Lot Three. That setback would be reduced from thirty feet to twenty-seven feet. This is flipped from what was in your March twenty-seventh request. And the applicant states that the modification will provide sufficient space for a building pad. However, this would be the only lot on Cross Creek Drive with a reduced setback to twenty-seven feet. And staff is of the opinion that the lots need to be at consistent setbacks. And Request C is to increase the depths of the lots seventeen through twenty-one and lots twenty-six through thirty. The increase would be by twenty feet in depth, reducing the area of open space from nine point five acres to nine point oh seven acres. This allows for walkout homes to construct decks on the rear of their homes without encroaching into the open space. This plan also identifies a thirty-foot front yard setbacks for the lots where originally, the original plan had proposed a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. Staff is concerned with the reduction in open space and is of the opinion that the applicant should provide documentation on what trees would be removed. However, over fifty percent of the property will still be preserved, open space maintained by HOA. And another thing to mention is that decks can encroach on rear yard setbacks. They aren't held to the required rear yard setback. The Anderson Plan states that when faced with land use-related decisions, decision-makers should consider the following guidelines. Lots and subdivisions should be compatible with adjacent developments in terms of size, density, character, and scale. Sidewalks and walkways should be encouraged with any development and connect to adjacent sidewalks. Landscape buffers should use, be used as a natural separation between developments of the different intensities. So staff recommends denial of the major modification requests for the following. Request A, B, and C for the following reasons. The modifications are not consistent with the intent of the approving resolution. The proposed modifications are not compatible with the site and surrounding uses. The proposed modifications are not consistent with general land use guidance from the Two Thousand Twenty-Two Anderson Plan, and removal of the sidewalk is not consistent with the Hamilton County Regulations and the Two Thousand Eighteen Anderson Trails Plan. And then these are your variance standards to be considered, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Question for Sarah. Looking at the drawings, if you could just tell me in the packet, I'm looking at them and from, from what I can tell, the, the lot lines on these ones, they want to extend a little bit. Is this, am I, is this the right drawing that shows, compares the, what is approved versus what they want? Sorry, it's a little hard to see.
No, you're okay.
Or can you put that one up there? Yeah, what they want and what's been approved? I mean, I can see the, the front setback on that Lot Three, and I can see the sidewalk along the pond, but I'm having trouble figuring out the changes in these lots that might be extended.
Yeah, they, the applicant can dive into it further, I know that they brought their drawings. Because I'm not sure that the, I think it just shows what they're proposing the modification to be.
You think these are all showing the proposed? Okay.
So no before and after overlay, saying here's what we approved, here's what they want?
Correct.
That's what I'm asking for, but I'm not seeing that correct.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. And in the, in the cover letter from Mr. Palo, there was a number of additional things that they were talking about changing. Are those resolved at this point? It's just the three in the staff report?
So a lot of those would not have required a major modification.
I got you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, just one quick question. So even if we were to approve the modification regarding the sidewalk, that would still have to go to regional planning, would it not, for a variance from the subregs?
I believe it would.
Still on the sidewalks, did staff, maybe it's a question for the applicant, did staff offer like maybe some sort of fencing, pedestrian split rail fencing or something for, to mitigate the safety?
They have proposed fencing along Lot One, it's like decorative landscape fencing.
But not for the sidewalk that they want to?
That they want to remove now.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Tree award. I almost just ruined it, was just given to Mr. Faruja by Ms. Donovan before the meeting. Thank you, members of the commission. Rick Palo, Aaronoff, Rosen and Hunt, representing the developer. With what Ms. Donovan just, I guess, advised us on, that there's no required set, or there's no required variance for a deck going into the setback. We may be down to one issue, but maybe when we get into that, we can get a little bit more clarification.
It's an open deck. It's an open deck.
Yeah, this would be an open deck, yeah. We'll get, yeah. As Ms. Donovan indicated in the initial application, back in March, we had one proposal that had some significant issues, as the staff pointed out, for compliance with all the required subdivision regulations, the approving resolution, and the various plans within Anderson Township. And given that plan, we went back amongst basically the group here, and spent quite a long time, especially with Rich Arnold, who you know, Fred Bowling's been here, and Joe Faruja, to come to this plan, where it's basically boiling down to one requested variance. Maybe two, depending on the sidewalk issue, how that's resolved. On variance, on the variance issue on Lot Number Three, I want to jump to that first, as opposed to attacking the sidewalk first. As you can see, on Lot Three, that lot is about seventy-five feet wide. The two adjoining lots are, I believe, fifty-five feet wide, if memory serves me correctly. And the twenty-seven-foot setback, you can see it's right at the bend of the street, so it's almost, is following the natural curvature. So the, the perception, since this is also an internal street, meaning not a, a street fronting to the public, even though these are public streets, the impact, the visual impact, is imperceptible. So a three-foot setback, so not to encroach into the rear yard setback is what we're asking for. And it's basically on half of the house. It's not on the entire house, and if you were able to blow that up, I think Mr. Arnold has maybe a little bit better detail on his drawing, where you can see exactly where the encroachment would be within the thirty-foot yard setback, and where the twenty-foot yard setback starts.
So Rich, I think we measured it out earlier, it's about half of.
And if you take the, the front yard of four and just project it, that's where it meets the, the front of the home on three.
And so we're merely just moving the, the front of the home forward three feet, so not to encroach whatsoever into the rear yard setback. And it'd be about half, half of the home.
Sarah, do we have a pointer? If they can use that, since we don't have the screens. The red pointer, they can go up on this laser pointer.
Do you have one, Rich? Correspondent is on my desk.
Okay, thanks.
And we can put this in, and again, it's only, it's only.
Yeah, I can see that.
My apologies for the interruption. I had forgotten to put my phone on silent. So of the, the encroachment, Rich, how many feet exactly do you recall?
It's a three-foot encroachment, but.
I mean, the width of the encroachment?
It's about half. I, I don't have the exact dimension, but, but if there's a, a major concern, what we could do is we could extend the front yard setback of four and project it across the front of three till it intersects that, that arc. And then that way, at least on the west side of that lot, it would still be.
So come, the parallel to Lot Three, across from Lot Four?
So the perception, as you, as you come into it, it would line up with all the rest of the homes from lots, you know, four to fif, you know, four to fifteen. So I mean, that's a, that's a consideration as well, that we still afford the, the opportunity to put the same footprint on Lot Three as you can on four to fifteen.
Does anybody have any questions as to that proposal?
What is the front of the house? Are we talking about the patio with the garage, is like what?
I think Joe can probably answer that. Joe, you want to come up?
My name's Joe Faruja. So we haven't finalized the design of the plan, or the home. They're all going to be basically the same footprint, and then there are some options on the interior, two or three-bedroom. But these, the homes will be, it's a, like a maintenance-free type of development. So they're all, they're all pretty much the same on the outside, the same roof pitch, the same color brick, you know, that kind of thing. Garage doors might change up a little bit, but.
They're front entrance?
Front entrance. We're trying to make it maintenance-free type development. And the price range right now is in that eight-hundred range. So to give you an idea.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the timelines, like if we could somehow memorialize, if this one, the entrances on the side, or something.
Oh, it's. We typically put the garage on the high side. I think we're pretty flat there, so it could go on the left side. That's what you're, is that what you're trying to go on for? Okay. That's, I mean, I think if that were restriction to us, I, I don't think that's a problem.
Thank you.
Before you start, then, may I offer a couple or four items of clarification?
Rich, you want?
All right. Yeah, so thank you. I'm Richard Arnold, McGill Smith Punchin, thirty-seven hundred Park Forty-two Drive, Cincinnati, four-five-two-four-one. Couple other clarifications, as Brian alluded to, as to how we were comparing the plans. I thought it was more important to compare the tree lines than, than the lot lines, so that's, that's the purpose of that drawing, where as we compared the final development plan tree line to the, this plan, this major modification plan, as you see today. So for an example, if you look at lots twenty-two and twenty-three, the, you can see the tree lines up into the lot more, and we're, we're grading more in that area, but the.
Rich, you want to explain the red, the green, the difference?
Yeah, the red, yes. The red means that we're removing more trees. And the green is area where we're saving trees compared to what we had in the final development plan that was submitted before you last year.
And the, the net loss or gain?
The net, it's actually a net gain of, you know, six hundred square feet, so it's negligible, okay? But the other thing I wanted to point out to you is you, you may have been in the loop or not in the loop, but when we submitted the major modification initially, we had shown lots fourteen and fifteen further to the north. And in order to mitigate that issue, we used to have a, a symmetrical cul-de-sac there, similar to the shorter one going to the south, and now we've, we've shifted the cul-de-sac fifteen feet to the south, so it's an offset cul-de-sac. And that's how we kind of got around being able to put the same footprint on lots fourteen and fifteen. And I wanted to make sure the planning, or the zoning commission was aware of that before moving forward with the discussion. From that, I digress.
And Fred, you want to come up to explain the landscaping issues? You know, going back into the set, the rear yard setback, whether we're moving the lots back? If we have to move the lots back.
Right. Fred Bowling, landscape architect. To go back to the original plan, one of the items that was brought up in the staff report was the trees behind Lot, is that sixteen? Sixteen.
Thirteen to sixteen.
Yeah. So per this recommendation from a year ago, we did go back and add shade trees and additional evergreen trees, so that is covered and it's shown on the plans that you have submitted to you. So I want to make sure that you knew that that one was covered. As far as looking at the south side of the development, where the red and green represent, represents the trees that had been removed or added, or not added, but not affected for this new plan. When I was out there evaluating it, it was a really overwhelming amount of honeysuckle out there. There's a lot of black locust, which is not a desirable tree at all. And there was a, a number of other ones, like a box elder, which again, is not a desirable tree. The pretty much desirable trees on this lot are down towards the creek. There's trees down along the creek, such as maples and sycamores and so on. But up towards the, where the development's going in, there really wasn't any, what I would call, desirable trees to speak of. The majority were black locusts.
Mr. Chair, if I have a quick question?
What, do you have any idea what the caliper inches is of the trees to be removed versus the trees that are to be not removed, but were approved to be removed? Follow that one. In terms of, of, I'll say, quality or good caliper inches?
I, I really can't speak, because I didn't go out to look at that. That wasn't on my radar as far as the caliper inches. I was just looking at the quality of trees. It's quite a few. I don't know if there's a tornado or something that went through a couple of years ago, but the tops of a lot of those trees out there are broken off, and there's some broken branches throughout that whole area as well. But I, I honestly didn't look at the caliper size.
Rich, on the, if you were, if you were talking about that Lot Three and the twenty-seven feet versus the thirty feet, what would the distance be from the east property line of Lot Three going in? How far do you need that from the east property line, I guess is what I'm asking?
How far do I need from the east property line? Probably. Oh, about thirty-five feet.
And if you were to run Lot Four parallel? Would that help?
Well, if I run, but I'm still.
Yeah.
I'm getting, I guess my answer is based on what would, what would be the distance where I'd be less than that thirty-feet setback. And I'm, I'm saying about thirty-five feet.
Of the, what, fifty? Is it fifty? I can't remember.
Yeah, Lot Seventy-five. With that being around that curve like that.
Oh, yeah.
It's, you know, it's along the front yard setback, it's approximately seventy feet wide, whereas your typical lot is, you know, fifty-four. So what, what I'm saying is, it would, approximately thirty-five feet across there would be the distance where I would be less than a thirty-foot front yard setback. And it would, you know, in the end of the day, it'd be kind of a variation, since we're trying to keep three, the front three in line with the front of four.
And you could still do that, as you had suggested, I think, and also what Mr. Henson had suggested, move the, the garage from the, the right to the left.
Yes, we can put it on the left side.
And there is one other thing I'd ask Mr. Bowling to go over, is the, the landscaping plan itself. Sarah, can you pull up the landscaping plan? It really, to the rear of the lots, the open space areas.
Along the north property.
Yeah, the north property line. Thank you.
While we're getting there, I did want to point out too something I forgot to mention. When we were talking about the trees along the south side, is the new layout actually preserves about six hundred feet, square feet more of tree canopy than the previously approved final development plan. And that's what's represented by the green lines up there. Those are the ones that are not being affected. And actually, there, you can see where a couple of them actually come forward into the, into the development. The red lines, well, it was a previous drawing, show where they would be affected as, as far as being removed. But the net effect was, there's going to be about six hundred square feet more tree canopy under this new submittal. Now, addressing the landscape plan, though, along the north, we started out that we wanted to preserve the, the privacy between the neighbors and the new development, and so there was quite a bit of ornamental and evergreen trees put in there, and there wasn't so much shade trees. And then the commission came back and requested some more shade trees, and again, some more evergreens up towards the northwest, which would be the top left of the drawing. And so those were accommodated in the previous, well, they show up in this plan, but we did it for the previous plan as well. We added the shade trees.
Any questions on the landscaping?
Thank you.
So looking at lots twenty-six through thirty, talked about gaining by moving the trees to remain lying towards the home. So why, why were you able to gain that without sort of sacrificing for the, those homeowners? Or how are you putting safeguards in place that the homeowners don't come in and say, well, I want more of my lot back?
Well, I'll answer your first question.
Well, I'll answer your first question there, okay. And the first question is, because the decision was made that we would go ahead and place decks at the rest, at the rear of those buildings by placing decks instead of patios, you're going to grade less in the rear of those yards, so resulting in the ability to have more trees in the rear yard than we had before.
And those are the walkout lots, correct?
Yes, sir.
So walkout lots, nope?
Walking out to a deck instead of walking out to a patio. If I put the patio there, then I've got to grade out for the distance of the patio, whereas on the deck, I don't have to do that.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to ask you to explain some of the sidewalk.
Yeah, so let's go to the sidewalk. I left the most, what I'm, it's really not controversial, but the most at issue is the sidewalk. We had initially proposed not including the sidewalk along the retention detention basin, which really is a catch basin. And the reason for that, I'm going to read this into the record, this is from Debbie Calhoun at Hamilton County. And it says, "Joe, I have attached a rough sketch of the sidewalk that, in my opinion, would be practical for the posed, proposed subdivision. For safety reasons, the detention should have fencing or landscaping because of the grade changes. The handicap ramps could possibly be on the lots, on lots three and lots 35. Anderson Township, as you know, has the final approval on the sidewalk location. I just wanted to share my thoughts." And her proposal, her sketch, ended up in the proposed plan, where it would be a mid-street crossing. And, you know, in speaking with Mr. Farugia, and this is going back from the original proposal, he really has no problem with putting in the sidewalk as proposed, but is concerned, again, wants to raise that issue. On the record, he is concerned about safety because of the steep drop-off. If the commission does require the sidewalk, regardless, he is going to put hedging, thick hedging up there, you know, to protect any walking along there. And it really was more than anything, a safety issue, because as you can see, the length of the sidewalk, you know, the cost is going to be fairly nominal anyway. And just wanted to raise that issue for your consideration, you know, for safety. As staff indicated, they didn't see a safety issue when we got the staff report last week. I would like to address the last issue that Ms. Donovan raised, is the increasing the depth of lots 17 through 21 and 26 through 30. And that's purely, as Mr. Arnold had indicated, in order to provide for decks to those walkout, from those walkout lots. And if there's no variance required, we would like to have just a little bit more discussion or clarification as to what the, kind of the mechanics are of the deck. Is it covered or not? Because we don't want to run into, you know, having it deemed as an accessory structure, which obviously, under your code, would require variance.
So, an uncovered deck does not require a, to meet the rear yard setback. If that deck has a cover that's attached to the house, it becomes an addition to the house, which in this case would require a variance?
For example, Ms. Donovan, pergola, which would not be attached to the house, would that be permitted?
If it's not attached, it's considered an accessory structure, and then it just needs to be three feet from the rear and side property lines.
Okay. Joe, you want to come up?
I mean, I anticipate that especially 26 through 30 are going to be, people are going to want those covered, they're facing south, so they're going to get that sun all day. But for the most part, I think people like a covered deck coming out of their first floor. I just think, so I might, I prefer to, that's why we moved the property lines. And I just prefer to get that done and over with now, instead of coming back asking for variances.
On a piecemeal basis?
Yes, yeah.
And so with that, I think the issue then becomes, is Ms. Donovan, I don't know if it was she or Brian wrote the report, or maybe it was collaborative effort, as it usually is. The open space area, the difference between the loss of the open space from the original proposed plan to the current plan is less than, than half an acre, yet still in excess of 50%, where your zoning requirements are 20%. So we think that request is well within reason, especially with no impact upon the tree cover encroaching into the open space areas, no additional tree removal. So, that's really, really, I think, well within reason. And also, just in wrapping up, I want to address some of the issues, unless there's questions, as to the depth of the lot increase.
So, on that, would they be putting up construction fencing?
I'm sure there will be.
Put up silk fence along the clearing limit?
No, I'm talking about the, you know, the mesh, like the orange or the yellow plastic mesh fences to keep folks out of there?
Keep them out of-
In the, where you are not going to be clearing now?
Yeah, but we could use orange fence, but typically we use the-
Joe, you want to come up?
Typically, we use the silk fence, and it kind of works as both the, keeps people out of it and also the silk. But if you request the orange fence, we would put up orange fence.
Questions now, thanks. So, back to the staff recommendations, when they denied, recommended denial of the request. And again, just for clarification, request, what I'm characterizing, request number one was the sidewalk, and I think Sarah, yours was request number B, the sidewalk. But, you know, we can go either way. If you require it, we'll put it in. If you feel, you know, it is worthwhile not to have it in, then we'll not have it in. So that's, that's really not an issue. On the recommend, staff's recommendations, on page five of the report, it indicates it's not consistent with the approval zoning resolution. But within the report, if you, and I did the same thing when I was preparing for this on Friday, each and every item, 1 through 10 of the approval resolution, this plan complies with, other than the requested setback, because that is not obviously compliant with zoning. And on the final development plan recommendations, on the resolution 22-627, again, every one of those items, the 11 items, this plan complies with, other than the setback item. Unless I'm missing something, it's fully compliant with zoning, as to, again, item number one, the lot number three setback, complies with the lot sizes, the density, the open space issue, everything the plan is completely in compliance with. Unless there's any questions, that's all we have. Thank you.
If anyone in the public tonight would like to speak, um-
In favor?
In favor of the project? Seeing, if we have any comments tonight, would you like to speak, um, against the project? Thank you very much. Now, discussion, this is the, we should have a discussion.
Okay, yeah, I'll start. My opinion on this, after hearing all the testimony and stuff, is, maybe changed my mind a little bit on a few things. One is the sidewalk. I am in favor of keeping the sidewalk. I think there can be some safety mitigation of that, and I think it's quite an important connection there. So I would be opposed to removing that. The lot three, minimal change, I get, I get it about being consistent, but I, I think that change is imperceptible. So, I'm not necessarily against that change. I know it's to make the standard footprint work, but I, I think it's imperceptible. And I do agree that it does line up pretty much right on with the next door lot. So I think it's basically de minimis. Then, the extending the lots, that one's a little bit tougher. I do, from what I heard, one is you can put a deck in there today, and two, this, this plan is somewhat persuasive that the, there will actually be a net increase in green space, even if this is, these lots are extended. The only risk being that, as Mr. Gothard referred to or alluded to, is that if that becomes part of their lot, the individual could go in and perhaps do some clearing, and that is, that's very difficult to regulate after the fact. But, yeah, I, I guess I could go both ways on that one, but leaning in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would concur with, with Mr. Eliff on the request day with regards to the sidewalk. I think that, that there are things that they can do to make that safe. And it's a situation in other developments that, you know, that they are able to provide assured sidewalk safety, I guess I'll call it. And I would also agree with him on the reduction of the setback for lot three from 30 to 27 feet. But I would offer that that come with some conditions, that the garage be on the west side of the home, and that that reduction in setback would only be for 35 feet from the east property line, which is what they had. So I think that, that really kind of ties that down. And I agree with his, with Mr. Eliff's assessment, that, I don't know that three feet on half of the house is, I probably wouldn't notice it. On C, I guess, you know, I see, I see what they're saying. I guess I would almost rather see individual folks come in if they are looking to add, you know, if you're talking about doing screen porches and those kind of things, those to me are more permanent type, type decks, or however you want to call it. And again, I have the same concern about, there's no way that we can regulate if those trees are coming down. So, I'm, I'm tending not to be in favor of C.
All right. On the sidewalks, I agree, we need more pedestrian options, not fewer. I don't like the idea of forcing people to cross a wolf angle, middle of, you know, for the sidewalks. So I think I'm in agreement with the two previous commissioners. As far as the setbacks, I'm a little bit different in that three feet, you know, we have setbacks for a reason. It's a little bit of a slippery slope. We go three feet, four feet, six feet. I mean, just want to make sure we be consistent. As far as C, again, it's, you know, six of this and half dozen of the others, so not too, as concerned, but the other two, I am. But I appreciate staff's input.
Thank you. I concur about the sidewalks. The front yard, I don't know, really, without knowing the true floor plan, is the garage going to be recessed back or flush with the face? So, you know, flipping the garage to the west end, I don't know if it's going to really gain anything. But, you know, I do think continuing the 30-foot setback all the way until it intersects the 30-foot setback coming from lot two may be a compromise, you know? So it has 30 foot from both adjacent properties. And then, the house plan then could be adjusted to accommodate that 30-foot setback. As far as increasing the lot depths of 17 through 21 and 26 through 30, I'm not in favor of that, because I think it just gives that homeowner more opportunities to clear things that are presented to the commission that is not going to be cleared. So, you know, having that property line at that location at least puts a D-mark between the, the open space that's, you know, promised to the public, and also the homeowners that are making purchasing here, and, you know, the true lot line of those individual lots. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
You make a good point about the open space, too, and maintaining a little separation of the open space there. It's a good point. With regard to the sidewalk, I like when controversy is not that controversial, I think, that it's safe, which is nice. And lot three, I, I thought it was kind of founded interesting, you didn't want to rotate the lot and, you know, ask for poking into the rear yard setback, most of the front yard setback. But because of that weird angle between lots two and three, I agree, um, most of the issue here, I guess, rather than definitely, I don't know. Thank you very much. There aren't any more points of discussion, and we've closed discussion, entertain a motion for this one.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, could I just get some, kind of consensus, though, because I'm kind of hearing different things about the garage location? I mean, are we, are we concerned about that on lot three?
That's what I mentioned earlier, that it's, I feel, worth considering.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the garage. I think it's going to be de minimis. But if that's important to a couple of the zoning commissioners, I'm okay with it, for sure.
Yeah, and I, like I said, without knowing the true footprint of the floor plan, it's hard to tell what changing from east to west is truly going to benefit.
Yeah, I might be more of a concern for lots two and four. So, not knowing any more details, I don't, don't-
Mr. Chair, do you have a preference?
Um, I don't.
Okay. Okay, with that, then, I would, if it's acceptable, make a motion on case 1-2022 Anderson, which is a major modification to the cross creek subdivision, which is located at 1949 Wolfangle Road. That motion would be to deny the request A, which was to not construct the sidewalk near the detention basin, to approve request B, which was a variance for the setback of the home on lot three for, from 30 feet to 27 feet, with the condition that the variance apply to only 35 feet from the east property line of the site. And with regards to request C, which was an increase in depth of lots 17 through 21 and 26 through 30, that that request be denied.
Any clarification on the garage, I'm in second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brad, we have seven.
I'll second. I'll third. Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes. And members of the commission, thank you, thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you.
We can quickly create agenda. Our next agenda item is what actually continues. Stick with this, item number five. Item number five is a quasi-judicial review for major adjustments to the planning and development of the request in case 1-2020 PUD. And with that, I have a little bit of a script that I need to read, and we will swear the audience in. So please bear with me.
As I whet the whistle. First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees, and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically, typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, please only facts relating to the compliance of these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application, and then they will present its case. The board members, I'm sorry, then the applicant will present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through the witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all- After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. Any persons testifying, or I'm sorry, all persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is to be directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now, will all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you very much. Ms. Donovan, would you please present the summary for this case?
Our case tonight is case one twenty-two PUD, major adjustment, and our applicant is Christopher Stark of WT Group on behalf of Klaus Anderson LLC, which is the property owner of twelve forty and twelve forty-six Nagel Road. This is a major adjustment to a planned unit development approved with case one twenty-two PUD to construct a five thousand six hundred and thirty square foot building for the purpose of a car wash with landscaping, lighting, stacking spaces, parking spaces, and a detention basin. So for a brief zoning history, the five former office buildings on the site were constructed in nineteen eighty-two. They were then demolished in two thousand and eighteen, and the new addresses were assigned in twenty-twenty. And the addresses, address went from eighty seventy Beaumont to twelve forty Nagel Road, lot one, and twelve forty-six Nagel Road for lot two. Case one twenty-two PUD was approved by the zoning commission on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, and that was to construct a ten thousand square foot medical office building on lot one and an eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square foot daycare on lot two. The approval also included a twenty-foot panhandle connecting to Nagel Road, eighty-two parking spaces, and ISR of sixty-four percent, and a landscaping plan. This was never constructed, and it has been used as overflow parking for adjacent buildings since twenty-eighteen. So this is the property in question. As you can see, that's where the five office buildings previously were. This is the aerial from today, recently, that you can see the vacant grass piece and then the overflow parking. This parcel is zoned E PUD. This is the survey that was submitted by the applicant. This is the site plan, proposed site plan, that you can see the detention base and the car wash building, their vacuum spaces and stacking spaces. It also gives you a sight of the two buildings in front of it adjacent to Beaumont. So it's lighting plan submitted by the applicant. This is the landscaping plan. Elevations that were submitted by the applicant. These are some three-D renderings that were submitted by the applicant. And then these are existing site photos. So as you can see, there is a sidewalk along Nagel Road that was constructed by the township, the vacant parking lot, a, also part of the vacant parking lot, but it is also cross-access to the building that Varsity, the shopping center that the Varsity Sports Grill is in. The back of the Anderson Retail Center along Beaumont Avenue. This is the side of, or rear of APGs. On your left, you're looking at Nagel Road. To the right is again that empty grass piece and overflow parking. These are the signs along Beaumont Avenue. And then our findings today, it's a major adjustment to the previously approved planned unit development. So we're really looking at zoning resolution compliance here and they following our articles of the zoning resolution in which the proposed development is not in compliant with. So starting off, article three point one for C two A is lot and yard standards. The submitted plan doesn't show right-of-way to Nagel Road or the required setback to the right-of-way, so staff was not able to determine if the site plan was in compliance. Article five point three D two C sidewalks along a public street, there is an existing sidewalk on Nagel Road, which was not identified on plan sheets or with the proposed landscaping plan. So staff recommends that a new plan be submitted to show that sidewalk, and there also needs to be a connection provided from the existing sidewalk to the interior of the site. That is a zoning, zoning resolution requirement. Article five point three D four, ADA spots were marked, but details for the signs were not provided and need to be submitted. Article five point three D nine, general design requirements for parking and loading. The applicant must provide two bicycle parking spaces with locking accommodations and placed reasonable access to the main entrance. Article five point three D eight dumpster and trash handling elevations were not provided for the dumpster enclosure. Article five point three G two, alternative parking, shared parking. There are existing parking spaces on the property which are used by adjacent commercial buildings. As you can see, it's been used as overflow parking. There are spaces proposed to remain in similarly to cross-access easements. Staff believes that shared parking agreements need to be recorded before the zoning certificate approval is given. Article five point three K, lighting for non-single-family uses. The submitted lighting plan is not in compliance with the zoning resolution for foot candles, as well as the maximum height for poles submitted. The submitted plan shows them being mounted higher than twenty-four feet. So staff recommends that a new lighting plan be submitted. Article five point five signage, the applicant's proposing one monument-style sign on Nagel Road, and the proposed sign is of similar surroundings and is proposed to be under ten feet high. The applicant's site was previously owned by Camboni Missionaries, who remain the owners of the Anderson Retail Shopping Center to its south at eighty-eighty Beaumont Avenue. In nineteen eighty-nine, a freestanding non-conforming sign was constructed advertising the previous office park. And then article five point five G one A, one freestanding sign is permitted per premise in O, the following districts, except that on premises with developed properties having more than four hundred feet of street frontage. So the Anderson Retail Center on Beaumont Avenue has two freestanding signs on the property that are non-conforming, and one of those is being, is shown in your packets as being used by this applicant. The applicant states that they have an agreement with the principals and are working to finalize the details and put agreement to paper to use the sign on Beaumont. That Beaumont sign is not under consideration with this PUD request as it's located on a separate parcel under separate ownership. Staff is also of the opinion that the sign is considered off-premise for the PUD in question, and the applicant is proposing to modify the look of the sign, but not the height, which would leave it in that non-conforming status and able to be used. The application's following, consistent with the following goals of the Anderson Plan, economic vitality, land use and development, and land use and development initiatives. The proposal's not, the proposal is consistent with the following elements of the design guidelines, site plan, and landscaping. However, the proposal is inconsistent with the following elements. Architecture, the submitted elevations are described as a stucco-like material and masonry wall. We are of the opinion that a mixture of materials should not just give the appearance of what the applicant's describing, but fit with the character of the neighborhood as well. This development is literally the transition between Beaumont and the residential area along Nagel, and we believe it should reflect as such. Site planning, we encourage increased walking and bicycling by providing safe, attractive, interconnected facilities. Cross-access agreements should be provided, as well as showing a sidewalk connection from Nagel to the building. And then lighting, the lighting plan needs to be modified in order to meet our zoning resolution. So the recommendation's based on the following PUD, uh, sorry, PUD evaluation criteria, which is in article four point one G. And then if approved, staff recommends the following conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Um, any questions from the commission or staff?
Sarah, just reading through it in your presentation, it appears there's a lot of unknowns or non-compliance. Could you attempt to resolve a number of these before, if the commission?
So we received plans after deadlines. However, we have spoken with the applicant, and he did receive our staff report before the meeting tonight. So the only thing that we did discuss with him was the cross-access easements. And we know that he's working on those, but that's, that's it.
Okay.
I have a question about the setback, Sarah.
Yeah.
Are, did they get it on the plan? Is it just that they didn't totally market it?
Correct. They will have to dedicate right-of-way to Nagel Road for the county, and that is not shown on the plans. And that setback will have to be from the new right-of-way. In addition, they're not showing the sidewalk.
Yeah, I had a question in the find, the staff findings, Sarah. It says the zoning commission is reviewing it because the impervious surface ratio is greater than sixty percent, which triggers the PUD overlay. What is the impervious ratio of this as they presented it?
It was not submitted with their site plans. I'm not sure if the applicant got it to Paul this week or not. But the reason why this is being heard, it was already, the zoning on the site was already a PUD. So because it's a change from what was previously approved in twenty-twenty, it triggered that major adjustment.
I got you.
But I'm not sure what their ISR is.
I guess this isn't a question, but I agree with what Mr. Lewis said.
There are a lot of questions about the potentially shared parking.
Correct. Yes, the shared parking was a big topic.
I have another question. So on traffic flows, it appears they can come in off Beaumont, come in off Nagel to use the, the car wash. I'm concerned about left-outs on Beaumont and left-outs on the Nagel. We're going to, if approved and all that goes forward, moving people to the signalized exit to go left on Beaumont.
They're not modifying any of the entrances to this site.
Right, but it might be a chance to clean up possible traffic issues. Did they ever try to go left out of?
Potentially, but they don't have frontage on Beaumont.
But they have entrance through the.
But it's not owned by them, nor is it part of the PUD.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I had one more too. Looking at the landscaping plan, this sheet LP dash one, I see a lot of pretty good-looking landscaping along the front. Am I not, am I just seeing turf between it and like the Goddard School? No trees, no, no buffer at all there? Am I reading that correctly?
Correct. I, can I get there real quick? We don't require landscaping between retail to retail. It's retail to, or retail to office or retail to single family, we do.
What about to school?
I believe Goddard's zoned retail, but I would need to look it up.
But, but there could be something added, right? There, gotcha. Okay, okay, thanks.
Which he, Mr. Eliprop, you know, his, his concern, which I would add on to, is the noise generated by this business toward a school. So as a concern.
Sure. Thank you for having us today. My name is Chris Stark, and I'm with WT Group. My address is twenty-six seventy-five Pratom Avenue in Hoffman Estates, Illinois. So, yeah, I appreciate Sarah's presentation, and there are indeed a, a few unknowns, just namely the one that kind of jumped out at me anyway with, in regards to Brian's comment about landscaping. We have no problem putting any kind of buffer there to, to screen out some noise or to even beautify it up against the, up against the Goddard School. And in regards to all of the other zoning resolution compliance, we are also prepared to meet or beat every one of those compliance issues. And I can go through a couple of the article by article of the, of the fixes that, that we would recommend and that we would present during the, during any other future submittals.
Yeah, and are there any questions?
Well, I, it's, it's not so much a question as a comment. I don't like designing things on the fly like this. And so maybe you didn't get a copy of our zoning resolution or find it on the website. But you're missing an awful lot of items here, and I'm not really prepared this evening about the rest of the commission. But I'm not really prepared this evening to move forward with this, this many items that are hanging out there.
Not to add on, but that was my original, I, I, it just feels like it's incomplete when it was brought to the staff. And again, I, I concur, it's not our job to do your job.
No, that's understandable.
Yeah, and I appreciate the first company said, willing to prepare this.
Sure. Well, we can certainly proceed. I'd like to get a, a favor of the board. Okay. If, if there is any other questions in regards to the actual project itself or the, any kind of architectural aesthetics, I can certainly offer that as well. Every, every nuance of the, the presentation that we had and, and that the plan submitted with, in regards to the renderings, we were working with Carriage House to develop their, their brand-new car wash program. Part of this program for the Carriage House car wash is to actually bring a car wash solution to the neighborhoods based on a Carriage House design. So that's, you know, back in the days of old when, when people had their carriages. They, they wound up bringing their carriages to a house, had them all polished up and all shined up, and we wanted to bring that, that nuance to the community. You know, rather than a straight brick building, we use high-quality materials such as a quick brick. It's a structural, it's a structural brick on the outside, in addition to the fiber cementous siding. I was, I, I took note of any kind of stucco references that, that were brought forward, and we, we are certainly willing to minimize that stucco look. But a large part of the Carriage House car wash is, is meant and designed meticulously for the look of the neighborhood cohesion. So we, we do bring in standing seam roofs. We bring peaks to the building. We also bring the, the finest materials that we can, that we can get. And we also want to serve the community the best way we can in, in terms of offering today's technology in, in car wash care, including, you know, the first stop at the, at the point-of-sale sign, at the point-of-sale register. So it's, it's all brand-new technology. It's also designed on purpose to make it a left-hand turn, so you can easily guide yourself on the. so you can easily guide yourself on the driver's side door all the way around the, the car wash entrance. There'll be a guide on the inside of the car wash to guide you towards the track, tell you to stop, put it in neutral, and then experience the, the car wash all the way through. The car wash is also not going to have regular fluorescent lights and bland lighting. It'll be a nice, well-lit phase of lighting for each phase of the car wash itself. Going through the tunnel area, so that you'll have the entrance area. And then you go into the tunnel area and then to the dry area. That dry area is actually broken off with a, with a wall divider. And that has the, the blowers on the inside to actually generate heat to dry your car off. So in reference to, I heard a reference to somebody concerned about sound. There is a quick door that drops before then, that the car will sit there. And then the car will, you know, get dried. And then upon exit, the, the rolling door will roll up. And then there's other noise factors is, in, in terms of design that we can, that we can do to minimize that. But all of, all of, everything that we put in there is designed to state standard in terms of sound. We also look to blend in the sound with the existing, you know, we're well aware of the, that the existing roads have existing sounds to them. That includes cars, that includes trucks, you know, and, and semis and, as well. So we try to blend in with the natural noise of the neighborhood. The detention area in the back, in terms of surface ratios, we are, we are computing that and we realize that it is a pinch over the allowable surface area. So we are prepared to, you know, to, to design the site within compliance of the, the new PUD. That's what I have. I do. So my name's Mark Reinhardt. I am with the Goddard School, 1280 Nagel Road. I don't know that I'm opposed to it. I just had some questions. Can I ask those? Right. It looks, it looks like it's, what type of a car wash is this? Is it a drive-through car wash where you stay in your car? Or is it a, a do-it-yourself kind of car wash where people are going to be getting out of their car and kind of, you know, hanging out? That would be a question I have. Oh, okay. And then hours of operation? I do appreciate you talking about the landscaping. That would be great. And the, and the noise. It doesn't sound like, from his testimony, that there will be a lot of noise. And then the last thing is, is on that east-west access drive that's there now, right behind the bank in us, we do have a maintenance gate that is, is accessible through that accessway. I'm just wondering if that's going to stay. It's just to the right of that little square behind our... It's our maintenance gate. It just comes out onto that access drive for the grass cutters to get to it. You would see the gate if you were back there on the thing. Those would be my questions. Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Thank you.
Sure, I, I, yeah, okay. Hello, my name is Charan Jackson. That's C-H-A-R-A-N Jackson. I represent the owner-operator of the, of the business. I'm, personal address is 3624 Kendall Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio. Thanks. First, the type of car wash that we're proposing here, it's a 150-foot tunnel that occupants would stay in their car. It is state-of-the-art, as my colleague previously had testified. And this is a, it's going to be a relatively new car wash concept to this, to this market, something that this market has not seen. This is very high-end in terms of the quality of wash. There are competitors in this market that will not offer this high quality of a wash. So, yes. Hours of operation, Monday through Saturday, 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I am not. Are you familiar?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, just on that, I wasn't quite clear on the answer to the type of car wash because I understand it's a drive-through. But is it the kind where after you drive through, is there like a crew that comes in and cleans the inside? Do the people go to vacuums? What happens after?
No, you, you stay in your car through the entire event. People do not get in and dry your car. And the vacuums are actually located on the south side of the property. And that's where customers will have the opportunity to vacuum their car.
So additionally to the, to the idea of vacuuming, the customers will also have the option to pull in and vacuum their cars first. So then the, the, the site plan is allowed, has been designed to guide and circulate the cars back into the car wash should anybody who doesn't want to get out of the car after they got their car washed. It's just another option. Me, I go into the car wash first and vacuum, but there are others that vacuum first and choose to stay in the car and just move on.
Mr. Trump, I have an additional question. You've got three dumpster locations shown here?
Uh, no, there's only one dumpster. And that's all the way to the back right, in, in the lower right-hand corner of the site. The other two buildings are the vacuum canister enclosures. And then there's one towel hut that we, that we offer towels, drying towels for the customers.
I have stuff, if that's okay. During the presentation, you talked about a brick, but the elevation's called CMU for the predominant with a brick accent. So brick and CMU are totally different materials.
Yes, it's called, it's a product called Quick Brick. And it's actually a, it's a structural CMU. So that's, that's, that provided the base. And it actually carries the load of our, of our precast roof ducts. Oh, I'm sorry. I can, I can repeat if you'd like.
You state that there's, stated there's one townhouse, but the plans show four.
Well, there, there's one towel hut. And then the other two, the other two, there's two other vacuum canisters that, that operate the vacuums on the north and the south side of the parking lot. And then the trash enclosure is over by the detention area.
The drawing A001 has a note that says townhouse typical of four.
That's wrong.
Two are near the vacuum enclosures and two are near the island at the two-way traffic, you know, driveway.
Understood.
There's, as other commission members, you know, there's no elevation submitted of the trash enclosures, the vacuum enclosures, nor the now singular townhouse. You know, what are those proposed to be as far as material?
Yeah, those, those, in terms of materials, those are going to be the same materials to, to provide cohesion with the site. So they will be matching the building. They will be matching the aesthetic of the building.
All right, that's all the questions I have. Just more confusion, so.
Yeah, I don't think they want me to vote.
I wouldn't concur with Mrs. Bright.
Yeah, I don't think I'm prepared to vote. I, I was, I think from the applicant's perspective, they've heard some very positive things about that. And I was very interested to hear what Mr. Reinhardt said too, as a major property owner. So it sounds like there, there could be support for the project, but there's a lot of details missing that we need, like the landscaping, more detail. Just, you heard it, I'm not going to repeat it. So I, I think I would feel comfortable voting on it after I have a chance to maybe digest the plans with the more detail on it. Might be helpful for me.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, I think the concept is great, the feasibility, viability, sure. But until we hear more, I'm not ready to move forward. Or say more.
And I, I would agree with that. I mean, there's just too many, you know, setbacks right away. Needs to be dedicated, details on accessory buildings, details on the building itself, landscaping that's needed, lighting that needs to be modified and so forth, that are mistakes on the plans. So if the chair is ready to maintain a, or have a, a motion made?
We don't need much. That's sort of what I was asking, is a good one to move to close it table and continue.
I'd rather continue versus deny.
I would make a motion on case Anderson 1-2020, PUD major amendment for carriage car wash 1240 and 1246 Nagel Road to continue the public hearing in progress.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Goffin?
Yes.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
We do not have any new business, but we will have a meeting.
We'll have old business. I'll move to adjourn. Hi.
Mr. Eliff?